Oh, wait, wait. He's got an idea. I tell you what, I'll just steer.
No.
He just needs the steering wheel. Is that okay?
No.
No.
Oh, he's got another idea. Listen to this. He says, "My cousin Herb drives a bus almost every day."
No.
Are you gonna let him drive the bus?
No.
He says, "True story." Look at him right here. What's wrong?
Yeah.
He's sad. Why is he sad?
Because he can't drive the bus.
What else is he...
He's pouty.
He's what?
Pouty.
He's pouty.
Yeah, because he's giddy because he can't drive his bus.
Show me what you look like when you're sad.
Yeah.
He says, "Vroomy, vroom, vroom, vroom." Pigeon at the wheel. Are you gonna let him drive the bus?
No.
He says, "Nope." Oh, look at this page. What is he on this page?
Sad.
Sad. What else might he be?
Left out.
Left out. What else might he be? What might he be? Frustrated. He's frustrated. Show me frustrated.
What did it say?
Show me frustrated. He says, "Wait a minute." Guess what he says. "I bet you've said this before. I never get to do anything."
I have.
You haven't said that before.
No.
As a mom, I've heard that before. Oh, you wanna know what he says now? He says, "Oh, let's see if you're gonna fall for this one." He says, "Hey, I've got an idea. Let's play Drive the Bus."
No.
He says, "I'll go first."
No.
You are way too smart for him. He says, "Come on, just once around the block."
No.
Oh my goodness, watch you see this page. He's gonna pull out all the stops. Are you ready? "I'll be your best friend. How about I give you five bucks?" "No fair. I bet your mom would let me drive the bus." "What's the big deal? It's just a bus. I have dreams, you know."
Wait, I don't want him driving the bus.
There's two more. There's two more. I read them all. I said them all. Oh no. Oh no.
I swear.
I'm gonna tell you what it says on the next page. Are you ready? I'm gonna tell you what it says, but then I want you to take a look at the next page. Are you ready? The next page says, "Let me drive the bus." I want you to look at the next page. Are you ready? Because it doesn't just say, "Let me drive the bus." It says, "Let me drive the bus." Look how deep those words are. And what's at the end?
An exclamation point.
An exclamation point. Not only is there one, there is one, two, three exclamation points. He really wants to drive that bus. Are you gonna let him drive the bus?
No.
Look at him. Show me frustrated again. Yeah, that's how the pigeon feels. Uh-oh. Is he gonna drive the bus? No, maybe we should... Do you wanna know what happens?
Yeah.
Look who's back. Oh. I'm back. You didn't... Wait, he's got a question for you. Ready? You didn't let the pigeon drive the bus, did you?
No.
Oh, great, thanks. Where's the pigeon going? Yeah, he's out of there. He says, "Uh-oh." He said, "Uh-oh." The bus driver says, "Bye."
Oh, no.
Uh-oh.
He's dreaming about a truck. He's barking at the truck. He's gonna get right over.
What is this? We just talked about a wheel. We just talked about that.
Wheels on the bus go round and round.
What do you think is around that wheel?
A monster truck.
A monster truck? Oh my goodness.
A bus.
Another bus?
A truck.
A truck?
Truck.
A truck? You wanna see?
A tractor.
A tractor? Those are all very good answers. Yeah. Do you wanna know what it is? What's he doing now?
Dreaming about driving a truck.
Dreaming about driving a truck. You dream about parking lot? Oh, you dream about parking lot? Guess what?
I see the bus.
Guess what? Guess what? Would you like to give yourself a round of applause? We're giving the state a no-bug show.
Okay, Mr. Sailor, what did you think about that?
I think we are finished. I'd be able to say that the talent, you can tell of our grownups there at South Urban is very deep and wide also. They pulled that off all day long, five days a week. Thank you guys for coming and thank you adults for interesting your children.
Well, Ms. Hall, we appreciate you and your staff, and I know what a huge job you all got. 188 little ones. I mean, our littlest, most precious kids that we have. And we're very thankful for the job you all do. We're very thankful for CAC, Community Action Council. They're a fantastic partner with our school district, and we're excited about that partnership continuing. And, you know, this is our future. Seven, you know, it's gonna be, what, 12, 13 years from now, they will be graduates of Estill County High School. So, and some of them, these all four-year-olds?
No, they're not.
Oh, so we're talking about 18 years from now or 19 years from now. So, we're really appreciative. And I'm adding a few more probably. We're talking about 13, 14, 15 years. So, I don't know where I got 17, 18, 19. That's those math skills I used to throw. Well, listen, honestly, we do have students over there that are brand-new babies. So, they are 18 years away from being Estill County High School graduates. So, thank you all for coming, and again, this is the highlight of our meeting. So, thank you all.
And it's okay if the parents, families, three reps. I made a school board. Bye, Emmy. She's sitting really good. He's outside sitting on the steps. They're adorable. So cute.
Thank you all for being here.
With her for many years.
I think Peter was running.
Yeah, he was.
Fight the current.
Now, Peter? Or act the father.
I cannot imagine.
So, next on our agenda is our facilities and construction update. And first on our list, we have Estill Springs Elementary Estor renovation and addition project.
Peter's handling everything tonight.
Yeah, we had a group...
He can do it. I have faith in him.
The update on Estill Springs, we had a great meeting there today, you guys. The project is on schedule for completion in June. A lot of work that's happened there this past month includes work on the storm lines. The masonry is all up on the building, which is great to see, and they're doing some in the memorial park as well. The roof board is on, so the building is dried in. Lights in the amphitheater have been put in, and that's great news as well. And the windows and doors are... I guess I saw all the windows in today, but the doors are still lacking there. Anticipated completion on almost everything before the end of school. There are a little bit of work going on after school is out, including some final storm drainage work, the canopy at the back of the building, and then epoxy flooring in the school. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you guys have on that project. Very busy job site today.
I've been pasted about three or four times this past week.
I don't know if y'all have noticed or not, the monument's going up.
Yep.
And the old brick that was salvaged looks really good.
It does look great.
They're doing a fantastic job with it, so it looks really fantastic. You all will love to know that we have encountered some sewer issues.
Oh, sanitary lines. Here we go again.
It does appear that it's gonna be a pretty easy fix. You'll be getting a change order probably next board meeting. But there is funds within the project that will cover that. We honestly felt like it was gonna be a lot more expensive than I think what we thought originally. It's gonna be less than that, so I do feel like that we've got sufficient funds to handle that. And with that one, I think pretty much you're... Unless just something strange happens, we don't foresee another huge change order of any kind at this point. We're sort of beyond that. So, June 1, I think, is substantial completion right now. Final follow-up.
It's right there at the end.
Please, once everything is in, I think that the next administration will need to sort of work with Estill Springs. There is some playground equipment within that memorial park, but I don't know that it's gonna be substantial enough for their upper-level kids. So, we'll need to look at that, but there's plenty around. If there is additional play structures that need to go into that part. But looks really good. Excited about it.
So, with all of that being said, we need consideration to approve a pay estimate number six for $496,770 and 80 cents.
That's my recommendation. It's been reviewed.
So, I need a motion to approve that. Do I have a motion by Sheila Samples? Do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a 4-0 vote. And I did not note for the meeting minutes that Brian Covey is out today, so he is out tonight. Okay, next on our agenda, we have our Estill County High School field restroom renovation project, which is BG 22-243.
So, we had crews in the field this morning actually punching the final proposal request work that was done on the men's restroom and a lot of areas of flooring in both field house buildings. So, we do anticipate to be here next month with our final payout for that project and the BG 4. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have about that one as well.
Floors look fantastic. Of course, this was expanding the men's restroom that we were not able to get done before the season started. So, looks really nice, and it's really the final part of the high school renovation. To be honest, unless you include the caboose that we're working on right now. But we're doing that as a maintenance project. This is really the last one, so as of just a couple punch lists out and they're done.
Right.
So, I need a motion for approval of pay application number three with DPO invoicing.
My recommendation that we approve that invoice.
I have a motion by Sheila Samples. Do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a 4-0 vote. Okay, next on our agenda, we have the West Urban pavement improvement project, which is BG 22-178.
Yeah, so we're here this evening with closeout documents for this one. Finally, we're able to receive all of those from the contractor over in the last couple of weeks. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you guys have about West Urban.
Parking lot does look fantastic. I know that they are going to come back just as soon as the weather breaks a little bit, a little bit more into spring. They're gonna overseed all the grass areas because when they hydroseeded this past fall, it was really dry for a long period of time. A lot of the grass is not coming up. So, they're gonna do that as part of the closeout on this document. He said, "Mr. Willer," who's our president, told me that he would get us a date here so we can let Charlotte know when they'll be there, so you won't think there's a bunch of strangers outside. But... Glad to be able to close this one out and get the paperwork and everything done. Everybody's paid. And so, it's my recommendation that we go ahead and close these documents out. So, I guess we just need to take each one out.
So, I need a motion to approve the final pay application number four.
Actually...
Let's do number two first, DPO and change orders on the final DPO reconciliation.
So, I need a motion to approve the DPO change order and final DPO reconciliation. So, we'll do that one first. So, Tammy Hardy makes a motion. Do I have a second? Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a 4-0 vote. Then I have the approval of the final payout, number four. Have a motion for that? Sheila Samples makes a motion. Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion? Like to call for a vote? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a 4-0 vote. And then we have a motion for approval of BG 4 for that same project.
Which is your closeout document, KDE. And then, once we finalize some Estor budget issues, which we pretty much got, we're on the downhill slide on that, we will get a BG 5. We're gonna bring to you probably in May and June, we'll be bringing you probably 10 BG 5s on all these projects. We'll get them all closed out, get them reconciled. And that way, the only thing that you're gonna have hanging out there is gonna be Estill Springs and possibly the district.
That'd be really close.
It'd be really close whether we can get that one done or not, the district safety and key and hardware project. But everything else should be done and closed out. So, it's a recommendation to approve the BG 4.
Do I have a motion to approve the BG 4? Tammy Hardy makes a motion. Do I have a second? Sheila Samples makes a second. Any discussion? Like to call for a vote at this time? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries with a 4-0 vote. Item D on our agenda is the South Urban renovation project, which is BG 22-176.
So, we're here with the closeout documents for South Urban as well. Jarboe was able to get us all of the necessary closeout documents for that project, which did wrap up. They were able to finish up the punch lists. Be happy to answer any questions that you guys have about South Urban this evening.
I didn't know if you all noticed a video of the classroom there, but the new windows looks fantastic and all the casework around the windows and the new ceiling tile that tied that building into... Tied everything together. That's a beautiful facility now that that project is complete. So, they'll be serving these little tics over there for the next 25 years in that building. So, it's a beautiful place.
So, I need a motion to approve the revised BG 1.
I think it was just a little bit over in terms of the final cost, and there was some extra money within the printing of the documents. So, Peter just had to move some of the money from the printing to that. And there's not a lot of money left in the project after that. And of course, that's why Angie and I will close everything out. Those funds, since that's an Estor project, they'll just go back into Estor funds. So, shouldn't be that big a deal. But KDE wants a BG 1 that checks the dots, the i's across the t's, and that's what Peter said.
So, I need a motion to approve the revised BG 1. Tammy Hardy makes a motion. Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion?
It don't matter.
I just saw hands going up.
I didn't see her. I always try to look.
So, I need to call for a vote at this time. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a 4-0 vote. Next, I have... I need a motion for approval of the final pay application number nine. Do I have a motion? Carrie Smallwood makes a motion, and Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, I need a call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
That was just a little bit below $58,000.
Yes, $57,000, $63,000.
And then I have consideration to approve the BG 4. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do I have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, that brings us down to item E on our agenda. It's the Estill County safety and ADA upgrades, which is BG 23-087.
So, we are still in the process of acquiring the materials for that. I think Mr. Haddix sent out an email last week indicating work occurring in mid-April and early May, I think, on that project to get all of this hardware installed. I do think it will go really quickly once they have the materials in hand. And that is other than being here for a change order that is related to some additional hardware this evening. That is the update on that particular project.
And I think we're ready to go with everything there. All the change orders have been sort of already taken care of. So, as soon as the hardware arrives, they'll... You know, it'll take them... Once they've installed a few doors at the middle school, they'll go quick.
I think it will go really, really fast.
And we've got a phasing plan at the middle school to take care of that. We've already worked with Ms. Napier, and then, of course, there'll be some Fridays. There won't be very many days they'll need at South Urban, but there are some Fridays that kids do not attend. They really feel like they can get those done. And then, of course, with the final day of school being May 17, I think, right now, or 18th, maybe is closing day. So, and matter of fact, the preschool program is gonna close on the 12th on that Friday, I believe, is what we've discussed with Ms. Hall. So, they'll have plenty of time to get it done. I think there's a good chance we'll have closeout documents to you at the June board meeting. Angie may have to reconcile the BG 5, but we'll get it done.
So, I need a motion to approve change order number two. It says, "Additional owner requested hardware on three doors at South Urban." So, I need a motion to approve that change.
And it's $826.50, so it's worth saving. You've got those precious jobs.
And so, Tammy Hardy makes a motion. Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. So, that brings us down to the high school HVAC controls project, which is item F on our agenda, and that's BG number 22-177.
Yeah, so I was real hopeful that I could be here with the closeout documents for that one this evening as well. The contractor was able to get the owner training done here over the last, I guess it was a week, 10 days ago. I can only assume that maybe there... I can only assume that maybe they're, they're having some difficulty acquiring just their, their closeout documents from their bonding company, sometimes that takes a little bit of time, and controls, guys don't typically GC a project, right? They don't have to usually bond for a project, so that, I'm assuming that's what's going on there, I do anticipate we'll be here next month with the closeout documents for that, all the work is done, all the owner training is done, we're just lacking a few pieces of paper to sort of get this one closed out.
It should be, Peter, just one pay app and BG four?
It's one, I would, I would assume a pay app and BG four. The pay app comes with several, several documents about them having paid everybody and all of the people that work on the project, and I'm assuming that's what they're, they're waiting to get.
Next on our agenda is item G, Mr. Sutter, do you want to talk about that, or is that Peter?
I'll let Peter take it, it's part of the district facility planning process, and it's the work that they, that we contracted with them to complete, which is just a survey of all of our school facilities.
Yeah, so we did, we have gotten into all of the facilities, there was, there was a lot to do, you all were a really busy board over the last four years, so updating the, the K-FIX database in Frankfurt is, is taking a while. But we do have our architectural audits done, I think KFI is finishing up the MEP audits, and we anticipate providing a full report to the LPC committee here at the end of this month. And then you all will be hearing from the LPC meeting, those guys at your board meetings, probably in April, and again in May, as we sort of finish up this process. I don't have anything more specific to tell you guys, I was, I, Jonathan was still working on the audits with, within K-FIX, but I'm, I'm quite sure that you all will have a good district facility plan in about a month, so.
I know that Stephen will communicate, I think there's a calendar that he's about ready to finish, and as soon as that calendar is complete, he'll, we'll shoot a copy to you guys, so you'll know, sort of keep you up to date when the meetings are. We did receive one important piece of information that we've been waiting on a while, as you know, we had structural engineers that did a survey of Estill County Middle School. As everyone knows, when you look at that facility and you look up around that hill, it's a beautiful facility, and you sit on the outside of that facility and you look at it, and there's not a brick cracked, there's not a block cracked, there's nothing that indicates that there's issues until you move inside of the building. And because at the time, the pyridic shell that we've had to spend a lot of money on to make sure that the ATC and the high school didn't have issues, really an unknown condition when that building was built, so there has been, since day one, since nineteen ninety-five, ninety-six, there's been issues in that building. I did get a report this week that that building is safe for student occupancy, and I was told that was the case from day one, but now we do have it in writing from a structural engineering firm in Lexington, who is independent of Ross Tarrant and independent of our structural engineer that we've used on our other projects. But in talking to him, I believe that it's gonna have a big impact on your district facility plan, because unless, if you're gonna put money into that building into the future, for instance, it's due right now, a total HVAC renovation, it's at, almost its thirty-year stage in life. We're, we're gonna have to do a little work, because the thought is, is that building is not gonna stop moving, it's gonna continue to move, the floor slabs are gonna continue to heave, there's gonna be problems with the walls, and. This is not for sure, it's not definite at this point, but within KDE, there is stipulations that if the cost repair of a building exceeds eighty percent of the replacement cost of that building, then they will not allow you to spend any further funding on that building. We believe that it's pretty close, because it would require extensive renovations to remove slabs, to replace slabs, to remove interior walls, to fix interior walls. Not only to include that, where are you going to have school during that time, because that's not gonna be a summer project. So, I do think there is some exploration, I do know that the engineering, just the engineering fee for that is probably somewhere in the range of ten to twelve thousand dollars. That also means that you're gonna have to have a contractor that's gonna have to open up to where they can get inside of the crawl spaces to look at that building. But it's probably my guess, as I've told you all before in previous board meetings, probably sometime in the mid-twenty thirties, you're gonna have to build a middle school. Or this board is gonna have to build a middle school to replace our current middle school. So, and that'll be at about the right time, because that's when all your bonds start paying off, so you're gonna have bonding potential in order to do that, that's why you do the things that we do, and plan ahead of time, so. That could have a huge impact as we move forward on our district facility plan, and then, of course, based on how you classify that building, then we may be eligible for some urgent needs funding, because that is a building that will need to be replaced, it's due to unforeseen conditions. And there is money within KDE budgets to allow for urgent needs monies to help pay for that facility replacement. So, I wanted to let you all know that tonight, you're gonna hear that as you go through the DFP process. I think we have to approve the DFP by the May meeting, so it can be on the June one.
I think, so KDE is not a part of the process now that we, you all have elected to do H, House Bill six seventy-eight.
So, we would still submit it to you.
So, KDE will approve it in May and inform KDE that it's approved.
So, we'll get that done, and that'll be one other thing that's all the new administration will play, okay?
So, there's no action that's required on that, it's just a report. So, I think that's it for you, Peter.
Thank you all, man, so much.
Have a good evening, thank you.
Be careful.
Be careful, I can catch you. I'll be right behind you here in a little bit. That's what I did to Roland that night.
Cheer, cheer for the yellow jacket, Sam. He went in there in a really wrong direction.
Went for Dale Good the other day.
And next, it brings us down to some action items, we have first, Estill County School versus the Jewel Labs Incorporated.
Ron Johnson, our attorney, on the action against Jewel Labs, overbooked tonight, Jonathan is on standby if we do need him. But Jewel Labs has agreed to a settlement, and there's hundreds of school districts that was part of this settlement, and. So far, based on what has happened, every school district to this point has accepted the settlement for this particular issue, as you all know, vaping is a huge issue. It all started with Jewel because they were basically marketing the young kids, and they got the ball rolling, and now we're still dealing with all the issues we have with vaping in our schools and with teenagers, students. Technically, by law, no one under the age of twenty-one is supposed to be able to buy a vaping product, but that's not happening, and it's sad to say that we have, we have stores right here in our own community that are selling vapes to minor kids. And it is a huge issue, I know that there is some legislation that has been proposed, but I don't know exactly where that stands at. And now, not only is it just the vaping in terms of the nicotine, it has went to the next level with THC. So, this is, all started with Jewel, and we do have a settlement right now, you, only you guys can see that, only the attorney can see that. At first, I wanted to say that this is a settlement that is confidential. Jonathan and I both talked, it is probably not something that's confidential, we're a public entity, so whenever we receive funds, the public has a right to know what those funds are. We have been advised, though, that if anybody does want to see the exact dollar amount, we would have to add, or they would have to ask through a release of records to get that information. But I will tell you right now that it's, it's less than forty-five thousand dollars, it's more than forty thousand dollars, so it's somewhere between that range without me giving you the exact amount, and again, if anybody wants to know exactly what it is, just do an open records request, and we'll honor that. We're gonna spend that money to help with the counseling that needs to take place with that, we've already spent money for vape detectors in our schools. The funny thing is, is once you spend money on vape detectors, they figure out, they figure out how to get around it, but it has, it has decreased vaping quite a bit in our schools, so we've already been out a lot of money. We've been out more than that just on the vape sensors in our schools, and Lord forbid if we have to move down into our fourth and fifth grade wings to do that, but now there is young kids, that's pre-teens, that are vaping. And so I hope that we can get a handle on that, but it is my recommendation to the board tonight that we accept that settlement and submit the proper paperwork. If y'all have any other questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
I need a motion to accept the paperwork and litigation against Jewel Labs. Sheila Samples makes a motion, Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
And just so you'll know, that did not cost the board one red cent to be a part of that litigation, which moves us into the next one, as it spread.
Okay, next, we need to approve a resolution authorizing litigation against social media companies.
Well, we all know that social media companies has not caused us one issue within our schools, and I don't say that very lightly, but it's not just a fact of the bullying and harassment that takes place on social media, but what it has done is it has impacted the mental health of our students, especially coming out of the pandemic. And as you all know, we've used ESSER funds to, to hire additional counselors, to hire social worker, to hire an LPCC, you know, to handle these issues, and we have multiple agreements with different agencies to provide counseling for our kids. Dealing with some of the mental health issues that has arisen from this, so I think it was pretty successful to join the first lawsuit against Jewel Labs, and it's my recommendation that we join this one as well and see where it takes us. Of course, if there's no settlement or there's no victory in the litigation, then there's no cost to the board to do so.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to move forward and authorize litigation against the social media companies. Do I have a motion? Tammy Hardy makes a motion, do I have a second? Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion? Like to call for a vote at this time, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda, we need approval of an athletic training memorandum of agreement with Bluegrass Orthopedics.
You'll be happy to know that Bluegrass Orthopedics wants to continue their partnership with us, and not only do they want to continue, we are going to expand services, which means that Kirsten, we will have her, I believe, now twenty hours per week. And which is gonna allow her to be able to not only just service, you know, football and a few home games here and there, it's also gonna allow her to travel during away football games, and of course, soccer is a big need. And those twenty hours will be spent, you know, with our athletic teams, and probably, you know, like on Mondays, there'll be like some training appointments that can be made by our student athletes that do need to see that, so. It's not full-time, and Bluegrass Orthopedics works really hard to try to get us to a full-time status, but they also have to look at their bottom line as well. And twelve thousand dollars is this agreement, which that is a little bit more expensive than it was before, I think that doubles our previous fee, but it also probably triples the amount of time that we have Kirsten with us. So, I do think that's a good move, they said they would continue to try to partner with us, and if there is a possibility in the future of moving to a full-time athletic training program, they will be glad to do it. But we're gonna see how this goes to begin with and move on from there. So, it's my recommendation that we approve this, and I do think it's a good move for all of our athletic programs.
So, I need a motion to approve the athletic training MOA with Bluegrass Orthopedics for twenty hours a week, as discussed. Tammy Hardy makes a motion. Carrie Smallwood makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, it brings us down to our consent items, and first of all, we have Mr. Sutter to review everything.
Yeah, the A and B's, normal business, C, there are some surplus items, we're trying to clean out some different facilities, and so there are some surplus items that'll be put up for bid, and we just had a, an employee that's asked for extended disability leave, of course, that's leave without pay. We have reviewed the documentation for that and feel that it is acceptable. Of course, it's, it's one of those things, you all have to approve it, but you're not really allowed to see all the paperwork, so it's my recommendation that we approve those consent items.
I need a motion to approve the consent items, as discussed. Sheila Samples makes a motion, do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second, do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we are down to our superintendent's report.
Okay, you have your personnel actions that were attached, Donald has always given us an enrollment and attendance updates, and I know that we have started working with our schools to try to boost our attendance between now and the end of the school year. Of course, every, every tenth of a percentage point that we're able to raise our attendance will be a decrease in the amount of funding cuts that we'll face for the coming school year, so it's very important that we've started working on that. Here's good news, in item C, as part of the memorandum of agreement with Bluegrass Orthopedic, they were, they worked with us, and we have been able to get Apex Physical Therapy to partner with us in this project, and of course, what happens is, is that some of our students, if it's a real serious injury, of course, they will probably go to Bluegrass Orthopedics. They have a Saturday morning clinic for students that are injured over the weekend or on Friday night with football and different things. But Apex then could also provide some of the treatment, and that would all depend on Kirsten, Kirsten will help decide where, what parents may need to do, and Apex has agreed to partner with us, and they're gonna pay six thousand of the twelve thousand dollar fee. So, basically, we're in a, Bluegrass is assuming a lot of responsibility, it cost him more than twelve thousand dollars, but then Apex is going to pay six thousand of that, which means that board will actually be out only six thousand dollars in this. And again, we'll see how that goes, and as that partnership grows, based on what kind of funding Apex is able to receive from treating our athletes, and then based on what Bluegrass is able to do, we may see it grow from there. But that is a good partnership, and I'm very appreciative of Stephen, who came by and saw us, and he sat down with us, Austin and I, and we're tickled to have them on board. You have your end-of-year dates, I sent those out to you all here the other day, and I think that's pretty much up to date. Biggest thing is, is that we have decided at South Urban, and we didn't talk a lot about South Urban on there, but I do think that May twelfth, I believe, is the Friday. But I do think that May twelfth, I believe, is the Friday. That will be the last day for students at South Urban. And they're gonna have a couple of preschool registration days the following week. So other than that, those dates, I don't see anything a whole lot different. Graduation is set for Sunday, May twenty-first. Been a lot of discussion. Why are we graduating on Sunday afternoon? That is right during the middle of regional and district baseball and regional track. And it's in the middle of regional tennis. And we never want a student to have to decide whether or not they're gonna participate in a regional track meet or they're gonna participate in their graduation. There's one thing that you can guarantee, on Sunday afternoon at two o'clock. Originally, I think now we're gonna move it to three o'clock, because there was some concerns about some of our churches do let out a little bit later than twelve, twelve-thirty, so we're gonna move that to three o'clock. And so no student, no senior will have to decide whether or not they get to attend their graduation. The chamber is having a big after-school bash. That'll be down here on the Courthouse Square, I believe, on June third, for any of our students and families that want to participate. And then, of course, I've got June twenty-third on there for the Urban Memorial Park and Estill Springs Elementary dedication. You have some fundraiser reports there. Also, item F, I know will be of interest to you. As you all know, we had Mr. Puckett that came and talked to us the other day about selling a piece of property. You have an email from Ross Tarrant that basically explains the piece of property that he is interested. It sits right above where a proposed site for a new middle school would be in terms of not only just the building itself, but also with the athletic facilities that would go along with that building. Because if you build a new middle school, you'll want to build, you'll want to build baseball and softball fields, because now you know it's an issue because they're sharing. You'll want to build a grass football field. I mean, so you'll want to build those facilities and have middle school facilities, just like, you know, every other middle school that we compete against. So there were concerns about drainage, and there would have to be some earthwork done there. And that cut on that property would go back so far, and how far it would have to go back, it's yet undetermined until you decide exactly where that school's at. And of course, with the report that we got today, that makes it a real possibility now that the school district will need to build a middle school sometime in the mid twenty-thirties. I just do not, it's not my recommendation that we sell that property. We know how hard we had to work to find a piece of property. And I sure don't think we need to be selling off that piece of property now, knowing that there is a need for that property within the next fifteen years. I did speak with him today. He understands completely. I did not want him to hear it tonight for the first time, so I called him, and he and I spoke this morning for probably about ten minutes or so. So he understands, and he's appreciative of your consideration, but he does understand the need of the school district. Last item, real quick, is, as much as I hate to even ask you all this, I really thought our legislature would try to help with the fact that we're coming off a pandemic, with the fact that our attendance is lower, with the fact that we have more students on homeschool. Thank God, we're not like everybody else, because I know that Mr. Norton has worked his rear end off to try to get our homeschool students back in the fold. But regardless of that, this school district, without legislative action, and they've got to probably twelve, well, they, well, they have the twelve o'clock tonight to do something, so they're not gonna do anything, I can tell you right now. This school district is facing about a nine-hundred thousand dollar cut in seed funds for next school year. Now, it'd be easy for me to walk out of here and say, let the next administration handle that, but that's not the way I operate, and you all know that. We need to have a budget work session to seriously consider what we need to do. The other thing that's being laid out there, again, and being laid at our feet, again, is whether or not you even consider employee raises. I do think there is some possibilities there, but it's gonna take some consideration in terms of what. But they would be minimal at best. So with those two issues in mind, I really think we need to have a special called board meeting. And if we can have it somewhere either around April eleventh, which is a Tuesday night, or April thirteenth, which is Thursday night, before the board meeting on the twentieth, that will give me plenty of time to bring back to you district staffing policies, possibly even bring you the district salary schedule for next school year. We have to have both of those items in place and plenty of time.
If we get to eleventh, that'd give you a little bit more time.
Eleventh gives us a little bit, I'm free either night, I mean.
I say the eleventh.
Everybody good with that? Six o'clock would be, I, I would think that an hour and a half would be plenty of time. I would not anticipate us being here past seven-thirty. We probably can't even get it done in an hour. I've already been exploring this. I mean, I knew the possibility was coming. I've already looked at some different things that we can do by using some of our Essor funds, eliminating some positions due to attrition, and by making some financial moves in terms of using some of our capital outlay cash that we have possibly to purchase school buses. I've already looked at things that could save the district somewhere between one to one-point-two million dollars without a loss of jobs and without somebody losing jobs. The only, the only situation you would have with any employees would be, it's not gonna be, there's not gonna be jobs lost because of job cuts. If there's any loss of jobs, it would be because of doing what's right for kids, and I'll leave it at that. That's the safest way to say it. So if you all are good with April eleventh, we'll set that at six o'clock, and that is it for superintendent report. And I'm sorry for being so long.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have our board member forum. Do we have anything to report from our board?
No, we had a very successful, informative KSBA conference.
The jazz band was fantastic.
They represented Estill County well. People wanted to hear them instead of going to their sessions. Can we just listen to them and stay at, is what we heard several times. And I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. Paul Hughes's wife, Joanne, passed away this morning. He's one of our former high school principals when I went to school. And he's the daughter, one of them, out here, and also worked at Central Office, Anne. So if we could have a moment of silence for that family.
So at this time, we'd like to have a moment of silence for Mr. Paul Hughes's wife, Joanne, and their families at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comments, Mr. Willis? And at this time, I'd like to call for an adjournment. Need a motion to adjourn by Tammy Hardy, second by Sheila Samples. This meeting is adjourned at this time.
Seven-twenty-one.
Seven-twenty-one.
Thank you, everybody.